All right, I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for October the 23rd, 2018. At this moment, spend some time with me, a moment of silence, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have few people signed up tonight, so just remember when your time's at the podium, you can yield to somebody, but state your name and address. You do have green, yellow, red lights there for indication of timing. A couple of things, Randy has just landed, he was in Richmond today talking to the legislature on our financial situation, so he should be here in just a few minutes, but we won't wait on him, I think he's telling me that Wallace is ready to go until he gets here. Election Day is coming up, so we've had a lot of debates, I encourage people to get out and vote. I know the office here spent a lot of time getting ready, so they put a lot of hard work into it, so thanks to all them and the volunteers that helped support that. We are looking for another meeting location, we've decided that it's probably going to be not conducive here, so we've got to find a location that can do some good video streaming, so we'll let you know where that is. City Council applications are now open, so if you go to the city website, go to the very bottom of the page, you'll see the link to get all the information and sign up. I think as of yesterday, we had three applicants, but I encourage anybody that's got the interest of the city at heart and want to come in and do what's right and help us move forward, please apply. So we'll go through the process of interviews and bringing those folks into chambers and ask a few questions, and then we'll list down and have a couple final interviews and make a selection. So we've got a pretty tight time schedule to do that, but we'll move as fast as we can, and hopefully there'll be some very good results out of that. So with that said, any other council comments?
Well, I just want to say that we had a ribbon cutting this morning, ultimate shine. The owner there said that they're doing well and things are looking good for them, and I remind her that McAllisters is supposed to have their ribbon cutting November the 15th, we're looking forward to that. The city's moving in the direction we need it to move in, that's brick and mortar going up and businesses opening up and putting people to work and generating tax revenues, and that's where we're at in this city, that's what we need to get us where we ultimately need to be. And late this afternoon, got an update from Mr. Conco concerning the meeting he was at this morning, an update on American Merchant. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're thinking the first product's going to come off sometime in January, early February?
February.
Early February, okay, well that's good news there, so very good, that's what we're needing to hear and see.
And I guess one other comment I forgot to mention, we are having a series of get togethers with Bristol, Tennessee. We've kind of been busy here the last couple of months, but Randy and I and Mayor on City Tennessee side and Mr. Sora met, and so we're talking about having a couple different joint kind of work sessions to work through what we can do to help both cities move forward from economic development, certain common things that we can do together, so hopefully those discussions will go well. We're a much better team and we can accomplish a lot more when we partner up, so hopefully we can partner up properly and move forward. It's a little difficult because they're a different state, but we'll see where the commonality is, and we do have a State Street that we've got to do what we can there to keep it conducive for what we do downtown. So with that, we'll take matters presented by members of the public. Has our first item here on agenda, so we do have Langley Shazer, I think, signed up for non-agenda items.
Langley Shazer, 409 West Mary Street. Mayor Moonpower and members of City Council, after speaking with several leaders and members throughout the community, we have several questions and concerns regarding the proposed location of the new elementary school. We would like to emphasize that we believe a new, more modern school or schools would be a benefit to the city. However, the current proposed location immediately displaces most of the elementary students and families and secondarily displaces an already established community and its residents. As parents, guardians, friends, family, et cetera, our children's safety is the number one priority. With the Bellhaven Exit 7 areas already highly trafficked and congested, and with the area almost close to its residential carrying capacity, we have concerns about daily logistics as well as emergency situations. We believe strongly that more research be done and information be gathered in the way of a VDOT-led or assisted traffic impact study, not only for the final development, but also while construction is taking place. In terms of information, has any other community been consulted on how they manage a consolidation of this magnitude as well as mitigating the type and scale of social upheaval that our children will be experiencing? As we know, with high poverty level and an opioid crisis, our children are already subjected to turbulent home lives. With this proposed location, we will be asking them to get up earlier and be on a bus longer. Has a study been conducted on the effects less sleep and longer commutes have on student learning and retention, and what is the strategy to ensure the students traveling from the other end of town wear the same quality of education and access to the same extracurricular opportunities? We are also confused to the sense of urgency to close schools that have been recently become accredited or have already been accredited. What message are we sending to those who have worked tirelessly to achieve such an outstanding goal? We also do not understand how months ago we were going to lose school programs over $300,000, and now we're in the process of talking about building a $17 million school and possibly accruing a $37 million debt. We fail to realize how this development will not directly impact the city's current financial position that we're trying to improve. We urge council to exercise patience and practice due diligence when considering this development. We ask that every option be fully explored before making a decision. We would like to see all questions and concerns answered directly and clearly with supporting verifiable data from reliable sources. We would like to understand why this seems to be the only way forward. We all want to see Bristol improve, expand, and flourish. Let us make sure that choices we make today assist in our abilities to grow and do not create another roadblock that prevents us from seeing the city's full potential. The community would like to reiterate that it is not opposed to the building of a new facility, but we would like to reemphasize the point that the location as well as the function should equally serve current and future students, families, faculty, and staff of the public school system, for there is no such thing as a level playing field if all the players can't make it to the game. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ginger Fleener?
My name is Ginger Fleener, I live at 239 Sherwood Road. I am here to discuss the whole school issue. The only reason I came into this situation with the schools was because I wanted what was best for my children as well as others. As a parent, it's my job to protect them and make sure they get the education they deserve. In the past four public hearings from the school board, I was taken back about the minorities and the poverty part of it and couldn't figure out the whole Brown versus Board thing. It bothered me that these two things was being discussed for having a reason to build a new school. I looked up the Brown versus Board thing, and it broke my heart that it was because of color issues. In the 1950s, the truth is, God made us all the same, and we are all unique and beautifully made. I say that to say this, to bring up something like that in today's society is not something that's going to move us forward, but instead push us back. The schools in our communities are more than just schools, they are each unique but have the same love for the children. The teachers and staff go beyond just teaching, they know these children and do whatever it takes to help them succeed, and it has been proven because they are all accredited now. If you base everything on just the buildings, it's not the children's fault, teachers' fault or anyone else's. The school board and superintendent have a duty to keep up the buildings, and based on the presentations and photo of the cafeteria at Stonewall, they have failed to do so. They want to bring up all these issues to have a reason to close these schools when they have caused these issues. We as a community need these schools, we don't need to build a new one, and we have our children suffer the consequences over others' actions and parents being forced to place their children in a school instead of having choices that would benefit their children. I, as a parent, do not want to be forced into placing my children in a place I don't feel comfortable with nor agree on.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Farnham, and I live at 30 Brandon Lane. I've lived in Bristol all my life, and I love this city. I've seen a lot of stuff recently, especially on social media, and including the folks that met out here the other night, talking about giving their opinions about the new Bristol Casino Resort project. I think there's a lot of people who are formulating opinions who don't really know a lot of the facts and details yet, so I have some information I wanted to bring forward tonight. I have an uncle that lives in Perryville, Maryland. In Perryville, Maryland, there's a adjoining town, they're really just separated by a river and a bridge. The total population Perryville and Everdy Grace is about 17,000, similar to Bristol, Virginia. Perryville has a casino right next to the interstate. In 2008, it's legal to put a casino in Maryland. In 2010, Maryland's first and only casino opened in Perryville. I have an article here that was written in 2014, and it tells a little bit about what happened. The mayor is quoted in here saying that he's always been in support of the casino because he felt it would be an economic stimulus to their town. The police chief is also quoted in here about what happened after the casino opened and additional tax revenue began coming in. Perryville was able to hire more police officers, they were also able to buy new police cars, they were able to invest in a state-of-the-art fingerprinting system that they did not have before, and at the time this article was written, they were planning on building a new police station. As far as the Parks and Rec Department, the parks and sports fields were completely remodeled and improved. Everyone in Perryville has a place to go to have fun, and their kids have a great place to play sports. This is the big one, the property tax rate. After the casino opened in 2010, Perryville lowered the property tax rate in 2011, and again in 2012, and again in 2013. This Bristol Casino Resort has the ability to directly affect every citizen in Bristol financially in a good way. My proposal to the city manager's office and City Council would be, let's really make an effort to try to get the information out to all the citizens, information like this, over the next few months. My proposal would be to hold a series of forums, similar to how we did at the Virginia High Gym during the budget time, where people can come and voice their opinions and their concerns, and maybe similar to what the folks did regarding the medical marijuana facility over at the train station, where it can be informational. Maybe, for instance, the gentleman that spoke here before, Mr. Eege, who I believe works for the owner of the property, Jim McLaughlin, could come and we could invite him to try to bring any more details and information about what's going on with the project. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we've got Maggie Hess.
This is a horrible layout that this room is in, with the community members not getting to look at each other's faces, or at least the one who's speaking, it's terrible. I mean, if you think about the Bristol, Tennessee layout, it's much better, because actually I have a very loud voice, and I'm just going to sit here for a minute. This, I wanted to talk about the casino.
Ma'am, can you turn around? I understand, but can you scoot out there so we can see you, please?
But this is exactly what they are having to do. What is a building that needs to be seen right now?
Just go to the podium, please, I understand your...
I understand, but why do you want to see the...
Just go to the podium, I understand, we've got some improvements to make, but let's...
Why? Why?
Please go to the podium.
Why?
One, you'd be on the microphone and everything you say will be recorded.
They can hear me. Raise your hand if you can hear me. Raise your hand if there's one individual who can hear me and will record. Can I use the mic?
Can you state your name and address again?
My name is Maggie Hess, I live at 245 McDowell Street, Bristol, Tennessee. May I proceed? I'm opposed to the casino, and I'm opposed to the schools, what's happening at the schools. I think that people should band together on these two issues, and there is a word that I learned in school called intersectionality. When different ideas like race, class, gender, sexuality, economic divisions, and disability all separate us, and the people who are marginalized are fighting for something, people with more power, such as the guy who's building the casino, he gets more power in the ability to be voiced. That's why you see a bunch of evangelicals out there talking about the casino as a bad thing, because they have to band together. People see it as a bad thing, and they are not able to band together, but if they did with other, more marginalized groups, then it would be beneficial for all people in the community. I think that it's not sustainable to have the casino or the school messed up like that, so...
Thank you. All right, Casey Almro?
Good evening, I'm Casey Almro, 2231 Collins Street. I too am here over the school. I do have some concerns over how quickly we're rushing into this. I know it's been under discussion for many years, but it seems to be sped up here lately, and I'm still not happy with the answers that we've gotten. The whole idea of the traffic up at Exit 7, putting all these kids in one location, having parents drop off and pick up at the same time with the buses, it doesn't seem logistical to me that we're going to do that and get our kids in and out safely on a daily basis. We're also, in the last of the four meetings that we had at the schools, they discussed the emergency plan, which I know we've never had to use and evacuate a school to this day, but that doesn't mean we won't have to at some point in time. There is not one in place for this new school system, and we're going to have every elementary student in one location. Why haven't we thought about that before now? That should be a top priority before we even consider building a new school. Another thing is, right now they say that we can make the payments on this school, and I applaud them for coming up with a way of doing this, but what happens when businesses start leaving Bristol, because we don't get anything else to end here? What happens when our population starts reducing, because everybody's leaving? What's going to happen then when our City Council pulls more funding from the schools, the state starts pulling funding from the schools? They don't want to put our kids in buses or in trailers right now to renovate our current schools, but when we can't make the payments, where are our kids going to go then? What's going to happen to them then? Right now, I'm just asking and encouraging you to please just delay the vote in approving this, and just give it some more time to see if we can, as a community, come together and find some more options for our students and for our community. That will be in the best interest of everybody, not just our school board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any comments from council on the discussion?
Well, I mean, one thing I think I would say, just on the school, I mean, there are some passionate opinions on both sides of this, obviously, and some people are extremely in favor, some people are extremely opposed. One thing that I would be able to say that hopefully would alleviate some concerns, I've talked with Dr. Perrigen, and I don't know if you all have too, I know it was presented at one of the public forums on the school. There will be security measures in place, I think they've actually went into discussion that there'll be big metal doors or something that slide shut that close off the classrooms and the rest of the, from the front entrance. So I mean, there are security concerns, and I feel like they're being addressed, I don't know if they've been addressed enough yet, but there are discussions ongoing about how to secure the site, assuming the school is built, how to secure it and make it as safe as possible for all of our children.
Bill?
I just encourage people to, I know some of y'all have attended those public hearings that the school board did, but you know, the school board meets on the first Monday, I'd encourage you to go over there and address some of these concerns, because some of these are things, and I understand your concerns, but things that are outside the purview of City Council, that they're really for the school board and the administration, so you know, a lot of times I've been to some of those school board meetings, and very few, if anyone, stands up and makes any public comments over there. Some of these things, they need to hear, I mean, not to say we don't, but they need to hear this as well, so I'd encourage people to do that. I think their next regularly scheduled meeting should be the fifth, I believe, the day before Election Day. Mr. McGee's shaking his head.
Hey, Nancy, you want to get up there? She confused me again on how she signed the form, but I overlooked it again. Put it in the wrong column, that's okay. Yeah, he's through, I think.
Yeah, I'm through, that's my only comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, I live here. I will remind you again about making false assumptions. I want you to keep this foremost in your mind, false assumptions. False assumptions is what brought us the Falls up here, which I refer to as the Rock Isle. Millions and millions and millions of dollars. False assumptions are what brought us the landfill. Millions and millions and millions of dollars of debt. False assumptions brought us the Clear Creek property. Debt, debt, and much more debt. BVU dividing from the city, millions of dollars, jail sentences, lives ruined, false assumptions. Gentlemen, I want you to be sure that you keep in your foremost thought, false assumptions and the results we have already gotten from that. Provable, valid, figures on the books, no argument about it. It's there, it happened, it can happen again. Now, I applaud the two people who stood up here at the beginning, in particular, and the third lady also, for giving excellent summations of what they think about the schools. There were no false assumptions in either of the first two presentations, none. It was cogent, it was well thought through, it was valid, and it should be listened to as part of an overall scheme. Now, anyone who has not already thought of this does not deserve to be in a decision-making position, that's the way I look at it. Now, in addition to that, I would have challenged at the last meeting, but I did not have the time to do so, I would have challenged the lady whose name I do not know on her presentation of the research supporting the positive benefits of the casino, which are diametrically opposed to most of the research on the effects of casinos. Now, my question to her would have been, in my own interest, I would like to have the name of the research she used, because I would like to read it myself. There is valid, good clinical research, scientific research, proven research, and then there's bad research. Not believable, it's just like writing a book. Anybody can write a book, it doesn't mean it's worth anything, but anybody can do it and have it published. But the research must be valid, complete, substantiated by well-known, accepted journals, organizations, people with experience, it must be validated. I question whether that was. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, with that said, I had a couple comments on the people that talked, I thought that was very good input. We've had multiple meetings in the community, and all of us have talked to the school board and the school system administrators, and so there are serious discussions underway. There's a lot of due diligence left to do. The big one for us, and it was presented very early on, is that the timing of any kind of school has to fit with the financial position of the city, and so if we incur any kind of a debt burden or increased debt that's on our books, you know, the timing is not right for the city, and so that's a nonstarter. And so that's still an open question. They were trying to seek comment from the state AG and the Public Accounting Office, yet to receive that. The other one was the bond rating. We can't have the city's bond rating or credit rating influenced in a negative way on anything we do, and that's all coming back to debt, and where we are as a city. And so Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's have already commented, and they said basically there's, it doesn't really matter which level of financing or what kind of financing plan you put together, it will still be looked upon as debt. It's a moral obligation. Whether you like it or not, you're still morally obligated, even though you might not be legally and financially obligated, you're morally obligated to pay that bill if something goes awry. So this city's not in a position to accept moral obligations or legal obligations, period. So that's a problem. The next one is the comments you've made about the combined school concept or model versus a community school model. I personally don't, I'm not speaking for these council members, I have lots of concerns about a combined school model versus a community school model, where you've got a new school at Highland View versus one school where all kids go to. There's logistic issues, there's all kinds of issues with the community left behind when the school closes. So even if the financing were okay, there's still some major questions about the options that need to be looked at to do this right. So we've asked for more due diligence, we've asked for more options to be looked at. So, we've asked for more due diligence, we've asked for more options to be looked at, including what would it take to do some refurbishment that's necessary in some of the schools to extend the life of those schools, right? So, it at least gives us buildings that are suitable for, you know, eight to 10, 12 years, let's say, to give the city time to do a new school right. So, those options are being discussed, and I know this council's looking for the answers to those before we make any kind of decision. We want to make a good decision, and it's, it's going to be interesting going forward how that turns out. None of us up here are against the school, I don't think, but we want to make sure it's done right, and it's got to be done within the financial means the city has to do a project like that. So, so with that said, I think that's all the people signed up for the non-agend items, unless there's any more comments here on council. We'll move, we'll move to the city manager. Do you have comments since you just arrived, before we get into agenda items? It's nice to be late, I guess, huh?
It sounds like I missed some good comments. Hey, I missed those, but today I was in Richmond, meeting with a joint finance committee in regards to Bristol's finances. As most, everybody knows, last year, about this time, actually, about, about 14 months ago, Bristol was notified that we are the most fiscally distressed city in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I had an invitation to appear today to explain what we're doing as a city in order to fix our finances here in Bristol. We had a really good meeting. They're really impressed with what we're doing. They want to see us continue on the right track, and I think they have every bit of confidence in the world that we have a grasp of what's going on in the city and what needs to be done. So, I just got back from that. Appeared there was some construction on the interstate, I think, that had a Highway 11 and the interstate basically shut down, but I know they were, VDOT is working on a I-81 study, so maybe that will alleviate some of that in the future. But things aren't going well here in Bristol, and we have a lot of work to do. We just have to keep our nose to the grindstone and not be distracted, and if we do that, things will work out for us in the end.
All right, with that, we'll move to the regular agenda items. Item one, consider a public hearing regarding the sale of city-owned property in the Clear Creek subdivision, specifically lots E8 and E15. So, hereby open the hearing. Staff comment?
Council, we have received two, or an offer for two lots in Clear Creek subdivision. The offer is for $34,000 for both. Each lot, or lot E8 is listed for $19,900, and E15 is listed for $24,900. So, that would be approximately $44,000 if they were purchased at full price together. Previously, council received a list of city-owned properties to be listed for sale at the February 27, 2018 meeting, and passed a resolution on the procedures to be used when an offer is received on April the 10th. The public hearing was advertised on October the 8th and October the 15th, so we have abided by that. Our real estate agent agrees that this is probably a good offer for both of those lots.
Okay, seeing no one signed up for item one, hereby close the meeting, our hearing. So, now, item two, consider approval of offers received for city-owned property in the Clear Creek subdivision, lots E8 and E15. Anything to add on the staff report?
Nothing to add from what I previously mentioned.
Okay. What's the pleasure of council? Need a motion in a second.
I move to accept the $34,000 offer for the two lots.
Second?
Motion of Mr. Osborne, second of Mr. Hartley. Any discussion?
Well, I would like to see those lots bring in a little more money than that, but given the fact they're open to the public and have been listed, and we're just not getting any offers, it's, uh... One has to conclude that that is its current market value. And until the city starts improving and our values in the property side start rising, I see no reason to refuse this offer at this time. I would like to see them up there bring more money, because that's our crown jewel in the real estate. And it's, it's really sad that two lots will only bring $34,000.
This will get it back on the tax records, though, and five years from now, they'll get a heck of a deal.
They'll build a half a million dollar home on it.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Well, that's what's going to be my comment. I would like to see the lots go for a little bit more, but, you know, I could see where it's close to market value. There's, you know, the market's been testing that side of the city for a while, and those lots have not moved, and they've been open for purchase for a long time, so, so we are already committed to let's sell the assets of the city that we can turn into bigger revenue assets, which is somebody buy the property, build a home, and that's the real estate tax you get. So, that's a bigger, more important priority, really, than the $2,000 on the value of the land. So, let's, let's hope the new owners and encourage them to, to build on that property, and so we can get some more tax revenues. All right, with that said, we got a motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Monther?
Yes. All right, item three, consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way, New Hope Baptist Church in the city of Bristol by caption only. Staff report.
We presented this two weeks ago, and it's just to vacate this strip of land between property that the church owns on both sides. And I know Mr. Hartley knows last time what was underneath that piece, and it's a driveway that goes next to the church, and so...
Yeah, I've driven by it. I was just curious, I actually drove by there, well, I drove by there multiple times, but I actually looked to see where it was.
But there's been no objections to the vacation.
Okay. All right, need a second. A motion in a second for reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Move that we have a second reading of the ordinance, caption only. Second.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Monther?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only, please.
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an approved public right-of-way of an untamed avenue.
All right, now I need a council motion in a second for adoption of the ordinance.
Move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Monther?
Yes. All right, item four, consider resolutions in support of VDOT grant applications. Staff report.
Last year, we presented this to the person sidewalk grant funding, and the way it was presented to VDOT was all lumped in as one project, and as a result of that, they rejected it. We should have realized that, but we need to break, we need to break that down into individual projects. And so, what we've done is, is we reduced, we've eliminated a couple, and we're presenting three sidewalk projects. The first priority is this one here, which is on Kingsmill Pike from Dunlap to Valley Drive over to the Dollar General that's over there. That one requires acquisitions of right-of-way, which we could use CBTG funding to get that. And so, that's available to do that. H-SIP won't provide, or sidewalk funding won't provide acquisitions of right-of-way. The next one is, would be to, we've got funding to do a shared-use path up on it, and we wanted to extend that same shared-use path up to Van Pelt. It would go through the park that's there, so it would connect that park down to Lee Highway, and then once, if, once we get the Phase Three of Lee Highway completed, then you'd be able to go from this park down to Sugar Hollow Park and out to the Falls Development. The next one is on Lee Highway between Valley Drive and Euclid Avenue, and we feel like that's, there's a lot of people that walk down through there, so we feel like a sidewalk in that vicinity would be of a real benefit to the residents in that area. The fourth project that we're presenting is actually, it's not a sidewalk project, it's a, it's a safety project on Kingsmill Pike there near Woodland Circle. There's several accidents that happen near here. If there's rain, people lose traction and then spin out, go into the guardrail, and it's usually, they're going too fast, the people that are spinning out, but we feel like we can still improve that by adjusting the road, as you see in this picture. It requires some acquisition of right-of-way, which we're still trying to figure out a way to fund that. If we're unable to get funding for that right-of-way acquisition, we would improve the road in its current location. We feel like this improvement is better than the other, so that's why we're, we're trying to go this route. We have to back off, we back off to do the other. And so, there's four, four resolutions, three for sidewalks and one for this roadway approval.
Okay, I have a couple, I have a couple of questions on this one right here. Who owns the land that we would need to acquire?
The church.
I thought that was church property. Okay.
Yeah, that's North Star.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then my other comment is, go to the previous slide to that, Suncrest, or no, the next one, Suncrest, right there. This could all change up depending on the vote on the school.
I understand.
That sidewalk is going to be altered drastically to what you have, you're drawing right now, because right down the middle of it, it's going to split it, but with a road.
You're talking about on the property, so...
On the property there, because the new, the new proposal, should it pass for, should it pass, there's going to be a road coming off of, coming up to the new school that's going to run right through that sidewalk.
It's going to run through the park to get to the school. We can modify the path. The funding for this is really four, five years out, and so, by that time, we'll have a front fix on what we're going to do there, and we can make, make a modification to the routing, which won't change the money request that we've put in. There should be minimal change in terms of cost, just reorientation.
Did you apply this as one of the projects because of the anticipation of the new school, or was this, would you do this irregardless of the new school?
No, we, we'd already, we'd applied for this one last year before we knew about the school. We feel like it's a good fit, because there's a park there, we can, and the elementary school, so it connects, it utilizes both the park and the school, and connects that to the shared-use path down on Lee Highway. So, it, it fits with the overall plan for the city in terms of trying to interconnect parks and schools in different areas within the city.
Is that part of the Safe Routes to School? Wasn't there a grant for that?
There is. This, this might be able to get some of that funding, but this is, it's a, I can't remember the name of the funding on this. Bicycle and pedestrian safety program is what this funding is. There is a Safe Routes to School. I don't know if it's the same funding, but...
It seems like there was something up there that we approved to apply for.
Yeah, I do recall something about that, but this is, I guess it may be under that same program, just different words.
And I have another question, too. Who has done a study as to how many people you think are going to use the sidewalk? Because sidewalks are expensive, and you're talking about the Exit 7 area, a sidewalk going from Bottom Road to the school.
Yes.
With not very much density of the population. So, where are the people going to come from that's going to use this sidewalk?
They'll be going to the park or to the school, or people, there are people that do walk down Bottom some, and so this would pull that subdivision and allow them to get down into, down onto Bottom and over to that shared-use path. And we don't have a study on the number of people that would use it. We don't have that.
Because I, I, I'm not saying they don't, but I'm driving all over the city all the time, just nature of my business, and I don't, never see anybody walking the bottom, the bottom road area.
Okay.
And I'm curious to, how many people are actually going to use this once it's built?
And I don't have a good feel for that. I, I guess what we hope is that a shared-use path will, will promote people to get out for some exercise and get on their bikes and just, and travel around the city, and this gives a, it gives a destination, because there's a park there.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm going to say then, I would like to see our dollars spent in areas on sidewalks where we know that there's a need, instead of where it's questionable, whether there's really a need for that in that area.
One of the things that they, I guess that they promote is, is destinations for these sidewalks, and so, because we have, we've got the funding and, and we've submitted the plans for Bottom Road, this provides a final destination for that.
To where?
To the park.
I don't know. I'm just going to say I've got issues with this particular area, getting a sidewalk when we know that there's, there's greater needs inside the city, where you cannot drive without seeing people walk and young women pushing strollers along our roads.
Well...
And we need to address that.
And, and we've done with, with the third one that's in there, the one on Lee Highway between Valley Drive, basically from the drugstores down to Euclid where the projects are...
There's a great need in that area.
There is, and, and we recognize that, and we've, we've, that's one of the ones that we're, we're pushing in as well.
I just don't want to spend money, whether it's city money, VDOT money, I don't want to spend money in an area that you just cannot justify.
Can you adjust the plan at all? You have, you don't have any kind of deadline or anything, where you can't modify the plan and adjust it?
We can modify, the, the location of the money, we can't modify. The, the routing of it, we can, we can modify that, like for this project. We can modify the routing if we need to. We can't take this money and move it somewhere else in the city.
Do, who prioritize, out of these four projects, how do they get prioritized? Is that VDOT, or do we prioritize them internally?
We prioritize it in-house.
Well, then, I'm kind of with Councilman Wingard. I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I can tell you, both of those on King Mill Pike, particularly that King Mill Pike going through Kingtown, has been long needed.
Absolutely.
A sidewalk over there, as well as along Lee Highway between Valley and Euclid. You, I mean, I see people all the time there, and the other, at that curve is, that's, that's a problem as well, and I think we'd known about that, that my understanding is, the city's known about that for years, and at one time even, probably, I think, my understanding, somebody said they once had some money and diverted it to something else.
We had, on the road project, we had some money to put down a friction course and some radar signs, but something happened with the money, and we only, we got a little less than half. Nobody could explain why, and so, the friction course really, what we felt like wasn't enough. And then, we talked to VDOT, and we've kind of figured out a way to, we go ahead and apply for this, and we can get that funding probably as early as the fall for next year.
If we can internally prioritize it, then...
We can. What I set for priorities, and I can adjust this, we set the Kingsmill Pike sidewalk as the first priority. We put this one as second and the one on Lee Highway as third, and we can reverse those and make the one on Lee Highway second and this one here third.
I would, I would, I would recommend that, because like I said, again, both of those, there are people, every day I see, especially along Lee Highway, and I think just, and I've got some questions about that in a second, but I see people walking back and forth there, going to work, and, and, and I mean, that, that, those are people, they, and that's not, there's a little bit of shoulder there, you can get over into some parking lots and stuff, but King Mill Pike, after the store closed there, the Kingtown Cash Grocery closed, there is nowhere until that Dollar General opened for anyone in East Bristol to walk to. And, and I see them walking, I've seen people in, in a, what do you call those things? The little hover things that, that people rides, kind of scooter-like things out in the middle of King Mill Pike, because there is nowhere for them to go. So, that, to me, is by far the greatest priority.
Yeah, and we've set King Mill, Kingsmill Pike is the highest priority.
Well, so, I mean, but if, if you can reprioritize that, I don't necessarily have an issue, but I do have some other questions here.
Go back to the Valley Drive and Euclid real quick. So, this should be number two.
Okay, and I can change that.
Okay.
That's an internal thing that we set, and we request that funding.
Well, I think I see the answer, one of my questions is, but you mentioned with King Mill Pike... Well, I think I see the answer is one of my questions is, but you mentioned with King Mill Pike, there's going to be some right of way acquisition, you see DG B. What about here with right of ways?
We don't believe there's any that's required. We could use, if there was something that came up, we could use CBDG money for that one as well.
Cause I'm pretty sure you're going to have to acquire, do something there. What is that between?
You're talking about at the church where the rock is?
Yeah, between Millsap and Maryland. I, I, I think everywhere else you're probably all right, but right in there, you're going to have to do some.
We're going to probably have to take some of that rock down just to widen it enough to get a sidewalk in there. We're going to, we're, the intent is to put curb and gutter down through there so that there's, there's a little bit of a barricade between traffic and the sidewalk. And then we'd set the sidewalk and we've got proposed a six foot sidewalk down through there, which is a little wider than, than most places. And so it makes it a little easier for pedestrians down through there.
And that was going to be my question, both here and on Long King Mill. I see you're going to put the, the curb and gutter in a storm system and particularly along King Mill Pike. I know, well, for example, a few months ago when we had the very heavy rains, that area had some, some issues of flooding and stuff. So are you going to install something there to deal with some of those water drainage problems?
It, it, it won't address the flooding issue. The flooding issues require something that's totally different.
But will, but will you, I mean, you are going to have something to drain the water off the roadway.
No, we're going to take the water, yeah, we're going to put, we're going to get rid of the water.
Well, that helps.
Yes. But it, yeah, it won't, it won't change the flooding situation. To do that, we've got to put some larger ponds in, improve some of the drainage ditches and things like that. Just, just for your, I guess, information as well. Long term, what I'd like to try to do is, is run a shared use path down Lee Highway, basically from here, from Valley Drive all the way down to right where the, if it starts to four lane. So we can, we can have a shared use path, the full distance down there. We got a piece of that funded. I can't remember the name of the streets, but basically just that subdivision that you go up just west of Hardee's, from that street up at the top of the hill where the, there's a turn lane. We're going to, we're going to shorten that turn lane and put the shared use path in there.
Along Lee Highway?
Along Lee Highway. That's correct.
Okay. Because I, my next question is going to be, you, your proposals of, of three different sets of sidewalks, can we talk about moving the Suncrest sidewalk footage to the other side of Valley going towards where you're talking about? Burger King and Hardee's and, because there's a set of sidewalks right now by the apartment complex, the, the.
Carriage Hills.
Carriage Hills. There's already sidewalks that stop right there at Carriage Hills and goes on all the way through exit five.
Right. And that's where we need to.
And we need to link up from the, the Valley to that sidewalk.
And that was, that was going to be the next application that we were going to do.
Okay. Can we change it now and take away the Suncrest and make it the third option? Because this option right here at least gives the foot traffic to Valley Drive where there is, you know, CVS and Walgreens and a gas station. And then from there, you see people in uniforms working at these restaurants, walking from Valley to Shoney's to McDonald's to Hardee's. And we need to finish that link from Valley to Carriage Hills.
That, that project needs to be broken up and to do that full distance probably needs to be broken up into at least two, maybe three projects. And part of our problem is that the, the grant applications are due November first. And so.
But you're going to submit three. There's no guarantee you're going to get approval for all three.
That's correct.
So if we do the three applicants right now at King Mill from Euclid, right here at the bottom of Euclid, the Euclid area to Valley, and that being two applications, and the third application take from Suncrest and move it from Valley to the exit five area. If they're going to deny you, they're going to give you option one and two to move, start moving forward. And you say it's four to five years out.
Yes.
So if we get this one right here, this round, then the next, and they kick out from Valley to the apartments, then we can apply for that again at a later date. The odds of getting all three are what? Slim to none?
It, it varies. It depends on how many people use the applications. In some years, what they've told us in some years, there haven't been a lot of people using, applying for these applications. And so a lot of the money's been just sitting there.
We need to wear them out because we need sidewalks.
Well, no, I agree. And so that's, that's why we're applying for these and, but what I was saying is from Valley to the apartments, probably i- if I applied for the whole thing, it's too big. I would need to break, break that up into at least two, maybe three segments.
I'm asking you to put it in two application forms right now. One application from Euclid to Valley, another application from Valley to the apartments.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're going to apply for the one from Euclid to Valley. But from Valley to the apartments is too long. I think it, the, the, the cost would be so high that we'd probably get refused on that. That's what I'm saying. That piece should be broken up into at least two, maybe three projects. We'd, we'd segment that in there. In order to get the funding, it has to be smaller bites.
Okay.
All right, Michael Pollard, you, you signed up for number five. Hang on. Michael, you signed up for number five. If you want to yield to Ms. Marnie, you can.
I signed up for number five.
No, sorry, number four. Ms. Marnie? Next time sign up for number four, please. You have the podium. It was on the agenda. Same agenda everybody got.
I will refrain from what I'd like to say right now.
I figured you did, but I'm just going by the agenda. Right here it is in writing.
We would have fires descending on us if I made my comment. All right. My name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, a property owner, and I live here. Now, years ago, this exact situation was discussed down there when the city council met down there. It was discussed at great length about how people could walk from Euclid Avenue on the right-hand side up to Valley Drive. This discussion went on for some time. I was there. It was done in my presence. This is not hearsay. Check the record. It ought to be somewhere. God knows where. Now, what the issue ended up being, there was not enough room to put in a sidewalk per se at that time. But what the council decided at that time, after much discussion, was that on the right-hand side of the Lee Highway at the Country Boys Market, instead of putting in a real sidewalk, they said, well, the entryway to the place is already concrete. So just walk on it. And so they looked at that very carefully. And in assessing the need for sidewalks from there up to Valley Drive, they took those little businesses, they took what was the entryway to the little businesses and looked at it and said, well, we can actually do without a sidewalk because that is very walkable right there. And people could walk right on that all the way up there. I mean, through, there were several little businesses there and there still are. And then you run out of entrances into businesses right where that big bank is. But if you look carefully, you'll see there's a white line about that wide. There's a reason for that because they measured two and a half feet and assumed perhaps falsely, to use my own expression. I don't know whether it's a false assumption or not, quite frankly. It's worked. Nobody's been hit or killed yet. It'd be me tomorrow, I guess. But they painted that white line and it went two and a half feet, which was considered adequate for one person to walk. And that two and a half feet took you down to the, where you turn in there at the church, well, the church was there, the entrance, that little street there and the car wash. So there really is a lot of in-place walkable surface already there. You can't call it a sidewalk, but that's what it is partly. And then the rest of it is what they did with the white line and measured it two and a half feet, saying that was enough for one person to walk. And then you were down to CVS and you were at Valley Drive. Now historically, you know what happened. Whether you want to do that now remains to be seen, but that is what was done at that time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I still wish I could say what I wanted to say.
All right, nobody's signed up for number four, so reading of the resolution by caption only.
Resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle and pedestrian safety, BPSP, project Lee Highway. Resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle and pedestrian safety, BPSP, project King's Mill Pike. Resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a bicycle and pedestrian safety, BPSP, project Suncrest. Resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a highway safety improvement project, King's Mill Pike.
Okay, let's pledge our council.
I move that we approve the resolutions as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, in discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say shortly after I got elected, I met with Mr. McCullough at length about different things as far as public works and we talked a lot about sidewalks. And, and I do have a goal of making the city more walkable because we have a lot of people who don't drive. And I don't know if it's a secret or not, but I like fast food, so I'm up there in that exit five area quite a bit. And, and just like has been mentioned, you see people walking to McDonald's and Burger King from the public housing all day long. And maybe there's barely enough room to walk, but it's not really safe. And no one's been killed yet and we would like to avoid that obviously. And that's, I think this goes toward that goal, especially with, with that area. And just like Mr. Hartley had said, down there in Kings, near King's Mill Pike at that intersection, there's, I come through there quite often. You see a lot of people walking and it's, it's not safe. And sometimes it's little kids, sometimes it's old people. And, and this just moves us, I think, toward that goal of being a more accessible city for people who are lower income and older and maybe they just don't drive. So I'm fully in favor of these things.
Okay, my comment is going to be Nancy, you're absolutely right with the extra side asphalt and everything there is on that Lee Highway section. But however, when you get to the church, the city just recently put in a new culvert crossing the road there. And then coming out of that culvert, they took that area that you're talking about and they trenched it out and they put asphalt in there. So that took away all the walking capability in that area right there. I mean, the only way to really do this is to buy a right of way off of that bank and take that rock out of there and get the adequate room that's needed. But I, I understand that in that area, there is, you know, from there back to the public housing, there is walkable side road. But then it becomes dangerous when you get to that point. And then once you get past that point, it's still bottlenecked up right there around the old car wash. It doesn't open back up until you get to the other side of Valley. Because from the hillside down, that is a turn lane coming down by the, the car wash. So we still have a lot of, a lot of hazards in that area, even though there might have been at one point in time, two and a half feet set aside. That's no longer available now because of just the recent construction there with a, a new culvert. But my issues here is this resolution is voting for the three options here. And I've got problems with the Sun, Suncrest area. I hate to vote for something that I don't feel like is a good viable project for the whole entire city. Should they grant us all three applications? I feel like we would, personally, I feel like we would be flushing good money on sidewalks in the Suncrest area that would not be used. So I hate to vote on this just because of that one issue there. But we need to move this application forward for the other two projects that I strongly endorse. And I'm a little confused here as to how to properly move forward because I personally would like to see this tabled with a new option coming back on that third application that makes more sense about submitting it. Because it doesn't matter whose tax dollars, where the tax dollars are coming from. It's still all of our tax dollars, whether it's coming from our local locality or whether it's coming from the state or whether it's coming from the federal government. And we need to be good stewards of all taxable monies. And that set of sidewalks on Suncrest, I've got an issue with it.
I'll address your table and the issue. There's been a motion and a second for approval. So it would need to be voted down in order for it. That would be how you would table it now. And then we do have a, we have a close, we have a meeting October 30th? Yeah, we have a meeting October 30th, a called meeting. And we could put this on the agenda as a called meeting item at that time because I know the applications are due November 1st. And would that give you enough time to get that turned around if we had a meeting October 30th in regards to these issues?
Yeah, we would go ahead and, and complete what's needed for those applications and then just add the resolution to that.
Okay.
Well, I was going to ask if you, if we could change the motion and vote on the first two, the King Mill Pike and the Valley Drive. Approve that and then let him come back with the next round after we, you know, change the motion, vote for those two to get that going. Because there's no reason to hold those two up. So that means you'd have to change your motion. So that was what I was going to ask.
The, what needs to be done if you want to do that, we need to withdraw the previous motion. Let's see, I think Mr. Osborne made the motion, Mr. Hartley seconded it, so it'd need to be withdrawn. The motion would need to be stated ever, which projects do you all want to see move forward?
Let's see. So I would like to, so we're going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to make a motion that we withdraw my motion and approve the resolutions for the Valley Drive and Euclid Avenue project and the King Mill Pike project.
Now, two on King's Mill Pike, correct?
Well, you've.
There's one sidewalk and one road improvement.
Right. I think the motion needs to be approve everything except the Suncrest project.
Okay. So let me, let me word this right. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve all resolutions except for the project on Suncrest Drive. And everything else is approved.
That's correct.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Second. So, yeah, and, and so the King Mill Pike sidewalk, the King Mill Pike in the curve and Lee Highway from Valley to Euclid. That's what we're, we're, okay.
Yeah, so everything except the sidewalks at Suncrest.
That's fine. I'll second.
So we got a motion, Mr. Osborne, and a second, Mr. Hartley, to approve all the projects except for the sidewalk at Suncrest. Any other discussion?
I'm good.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Tom Towns?
Yes. All right. Now we're on to item five.
Uh, council, and then I will go ahead and discuss with Mr. Pollak about what we would want to put on the October party. Call meeting agenda, it shouldn't take more than five minutes for us to deal with that issue. Council, I know we've talked a lot over the past several months in regards discussion on charter changes. And Ms. Storm is handing you all a packet of charters. You will see, looks like you may need a hand earlier. The changes are in red for you all to review. And basically tonight's discussion, I just want to get a feel, it's similar to how we do budget discussions. I want to get a feel of what you all think on the changes that I've highlighted, that I've heard you all discuss and things that we may need to look forward to here in the future. So here's the process that we're looking at. I'd like to some, maybe get some point of consensus. We can extend this deadline, I think, a little bit as well. We can extend this deadline, I think, a little bit as well, but I want to let you know that we are running tight. We probably need to have everything approved no later than the first meeting in December, which I believe is on December 9th, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
December 11th?
11th. So the 13th, we could, we could push that date to the 27th of November if we had to have a second reading on December the 11th, and I think we'd have plenty of time to get that to our local legislators for the charter process. But, you know, this is important, we need to be looking at it, we just can't let any time slip by. So I don't know what anyone's appetite is for this. I know it has been brought to my attention, maybe not necessarily by council members, but by people in the public, and I think Ms. Storm, she was at a clerk training two weeks ago, and this issue was brought up as to whether or not we would want to have city council elections in November instead of May. I know there is some, and I think very good arguments as to why you don't want to do that, simply because your council elections may get tied up in either state or national politics, and the things important to the city may get lost when it comes to dealing with the other political process of voting for state legislators, governors, U.S. senators, and congressmen, and president. I'm throwing it out there because it has been brought to my attention in the past. Any thoughts as to what, or you want me to come back to it later?
Well, I mean, we need to talk about everything, and I would tell you, I would not be opposed to that. Because I believe, you know, the November elections are going to be your greatest number of voters turnout. And this last election we had, we had 1,300 people?
Roughly.
Roughly 1,300 people. So I would not be opposed to a November election.
I'll tell you another good thing about having it in November, you would swear in your new council member typically at first meeting in January. And what that would do, your new council member would be doing the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Whereas now, if someone is elected in May, they're not going to be available to work on that budget unless they're already a member of council, and they'd have to wait basically an entire year before they would have any say-so in the budget process.
Actually, I see that as a drawback.
Okay.
Because I can tell you to, when, and everybody else has speak to this as well, but I think when you first come on council, it's a learning experience for probably the first three to six months, just getting up to speed with your schedule and your committee assignments and the procedures and what goes on. So it's going to take a little bit of time, and to come in and pretty much within 30 days start on a budget while you're still trying to figure out where the city stands on a lot of things and what goes on, I think could be asking a lot. You know, I personally, I don't have an issue with leaving it in May. I know you might have greater turnout because it's in, I guess, if we kept it with the cycle, it'd always be with a congressional, federal election instead of a state, you'd probably have greater turnout. But the way the elections are now, they're nonpartisan. I think you'd throw a lot of partisan politics into that, as well as, you know, I mean, I wish more people would come out in May. I think that's the bigger thing. You know, you probably would get a little more. I don't even know if people would vote down ballot, though, if they would just want to vote for the president or whatever and not even care about the city. I mean, you might have more people showing up, but it's no guarant, I mean, I think a lot of them would, but there's no guarantee. So, I mean, I'm fine with leaving it where it's at.
I would tend to go along with Mr. Hartley. As the most recent recipient of this, recipient of this learning curve, I don't know what I would have done if I'd have walked in on day one and we'd have started budget negotiations. There is a learning curve when you're, when you're a newly elected member, and it does help to have a few months under your belt before you get into some serious, serious issues. And I do have some concern that we would get lost in the shuffle. You know, the elections would get lost in the shuffle because you've got, you know, presidential election every four years, you've got senate and congressional elections. I don't know that we would get any, any column space, you know, for our campaigns or for actual serious legitimate issues that are facing the city, and it might just get politicized. So that's where I would, that's where I would stand on it.
It's my turn?
Go ahead. It's two, one.
I like it in May. I don't, I don't see, I don't see the value of November really rising to the level to move it. I think, I think if your May election, it puts you in sync with a new fiscal year right out of the chute, so you're sworn in right as the fiscal year starts, which to me makes a lot of sense. So everybody's on the same team, starting the city business on the 1st of July, and then, you know, it's all years, all year long. Coming in November, I understand the, you know, voter turnout stuff, that's valid, but that's kind of tough, that's kind of out of sync with where the city operates, coming in kind of mid-year as things are already underway. I think that's going to be more problematic than just leaving it in May. So I, I would say just leave it in May. I don't see the value.
What's it cost us to set up the voting localities for a May election?
I think it costs anywhere between eight and $10,000 is what it costs for us to run an election.
And you think you would save all that or just part of that if you did this?
Well, you would definitely, you would save it simply because you're not having an election, I mean, like this year, yeah, this year, you will have two elections this year. So you're looking at roughly $8,000 in May plus an additional $8,000 in November. So when you have statewide elections like that, or congressional or senate, you're going to have that cost every, every year.
So there is a savings to the city?
There's a savings to the city. I may get shot when I say this, but $8,000 is not going to make or break this city. I mean, I know we all want to watch every penny that we spend, we try to do a good job of that. And I think there's valid arguments to both sides of it.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, anything's debatable.
I think as a candidate, too, I mean, I know when people are, you know, parking to come in and vote, if you want any time to, you know, talk to anybody out there, you know, or they ask questions, you're, you're now competing against the state and the national stuff going on. It's going to be, it's going to be hard. I mean, you're going to be hard-pressed to, you know, have time to break in and talk to folks as they're trying to get in to vote for all the national state elections. So I can see that to be a problem as well. But I like May. I don't really care about the snow, but that's just me. All right, next.
All right, councilors, we.
What about the, what about the referendum?
Yes, we will, I've got a, I'm going to be doing some research on referendum language in other localities, because that is going to be an issue, whether it's due to the resort or whether it's due to future debt obligations. I believe based, after being 18 months here, maybe 20 months, it appears that there's a consensus on council that probably a referendum of some sort needs to be had when the city goes out and borrows large sums of money. So we will be trying to put in a referendum so that we can have referendums when the need arises, and we'll get to that. I've got another slide on that here in just a second. As you all know, we just had removal of a council member, and our current charter basically allows the council member in question to keep everything private. At this point, I would be changing, I'm asking you all to change the language that once the notice of intention to remove a council member has been delivered to that council member, any and all evidence would be made public at that time so that the public can be aware of what the allegations are, and I think the city can be better served if it wouldn't be a cloud of mystery hanging over the entire process. It's just more open and transparent government.
Yes.
Yeah, we're definitely on that one.
I think we've all had that, I don't even understand how that language got in there in the first place. I mean, it boggles my mind, and it kind of handcuffed us during, we realized sometimes there's things in here you think you gloss over and you never really think about until you actually have to abide by it, and it's, but that's the case, yeah.
The more stuff we as a city can be open about, I think, the more the better. It creates a healthy debate and a healthy discussion with the people who live here, and that's, I'd a thousand percent be in favor of that, and I'd imagine everyone here is.
Well, openness is key. I've said it a thousand times, I'll say it again for the people out in the audience and for anybody listening, my door's open 24/7. All you have to do is come talk to me. I'm more than willing to either dispel any rumor you've heard or give validity to something you've heard if I can. And it's, to run a proper government, it needs to be open and transparent.
Agreed.
Boards, chapter eight of our charter, and it's several different boards that we need to look at. Planning Commission has seven members, and one of the members is council, and then one who would be selected by council for an indefinite term and the remainder appointed for three-year terms. There's been some discussion, maybe within Planning Commission, in regards to that, changing the appointment to a four-year term and removing the indefinite term as well.
Yeah, nothing should be indefinite. Everything's got a limit.
Agreed. And four-year terms seems to be the norm.
It is throughout, all of our boards are, I guess, if you all appoint someone, it's a four-year term. Now, typically, when you all are elected, or maybe, well, when you came on, Mr. Wingard, in November of 16, you were appointed, but you were only appointed for the remainder of that term. So we'll have issues like that, the new council member will have issues where they'll be appointed for their remainder of this open seat. But I can't think of any other board that I know of where it's less than a four-year term.
How would you stagger those out? I mean, I assume that's the reason you have an indefinite term, is you have somebody that has some institutional knowledge, and, but with, you'd have, if I read this right, council member could always change, so you'd have six people for four-year terms. How would you stagger that out?
I think what we have to do right now is look at who's been on the longest, and their terms would expire as of July 1, or June 30th of 19. And then you just start staggering every two years beyond that until you rotate. And people can be reappointed, nothing to say that anybody can't be reappointed, it's just, it makes it clear. For the Planning Commission?
Yeah, it says that under there.
Okay. Well, that's why the indefinite piece is in there, for the, just like you said, to have some continuity. But the indefinite problem relates to what we just had. I can't remember who went off, but Mr. Wingard and Mr. Long were the one, that happened back in March, I think, March or April, and someone was appointed to the indefinite term, but no one knew who, so we had to fix that. But it just, it allows for some institutional knowledge of what's happened. But if you have good minutes and you take, have good records, I'm not as concerned about institutional knowledge as I'd rather much, I'd much rather have good records that reflect actually what happened, rather than someone saying, "I was at a meeting in 2016, and this is what I think happened."
Yeah, the only, I guess the only reason you'd have three-year terms is if you had six people and three-year terms, you'd do two, one year, two the next, two the next to stagger them. That's what I'm sitting here trying to do the math, figuring out how you stagger, you know, you'd have one a year, but you're still going to have two people that, couple of years, you're going to have two people you're going to have to appoint. I mean, I don't know that, it's not a big issue, but it's something we're going to have to figure out.
Okay. The other issue in our boards is the B V U authority. The way our charter currently reads, it is based on how it used to be, and then, of course, in 2016, General Assembly changed how individuals are appointed to that board. So we just need to update our charter, repeal what's in there now, and basically copy the language out of the Virginia Code 15.2-7205, so that it is in compliance with state law. Chapter 12 is borrowing. This is something that came up last year, and actually, it was tabled, I believe, at the last minute in regards to debt limits. So we just consider an amendment to the charter that we would require a four-fifths vote from council and an advisory referendum for any single project over 15 million. And the reason we want to choose the advisory language, I don't think council members wanted to be tied to potentially an issue, they didn't want to necessarily be tied if, if the citizens voted against something that didn't, wasn't very popular for whatever I think the number 15 million was thrown out simply because that's a fairly large borrowing amount. Quite frankly, we probably won't get to be able to borrow 15 million for at least another seven to 10 years, so I don't see it being an issue in the very near future. But we do need to have something in place so that something like the falls or the landfill never happen again.
No, actually, it's an issue right now. It's just a liability issue.
Right.
I mean, a, it's not a legal debt commitment, but it's a moral commitment. So, I mean, that, we're talking about that now. So, and I'm a firm believer, when you start talking about tens of millions of dollars, the people needs to have a say. Not just, not just a minute at a mic, but it needs to go to a vote.
Well, the thing I want to see added is, under no circumstances, where there's 10 million, 15, 20, whatever that number is, that you cannot exceed 50% of the borrowing capacity of the city, under any terms. That's what God, so you have to stay healthy for the long term. So if you do that and you're still at 105 million, so what? You're still in trouble.
Here's, I think, the issue that we'll run into from the General Assembly. We would be well over that 50% margin right now, so if they implemented that in our charter, we would automatically be breaking our charter as of July 1 of 19.
Well, then you got to put language in there, so it's for, it's when the future city doesn't get below that. But you got to say something or it'll never get fixed. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the language, but I understand your dilemma.
I'll figure it out.
I get what you're saying.
I'll figure it out.
I get that. But you got to put, you got to put a level there.
Absolutely, you got to put a level there. And if memory serves me correct, you came back with some stats last year, doing some research, saying a locality our size with the income that's brought in on tax dollars, we should be somewhere around 45 to 50 million dollars.
Right.
That's 50%.
In liability debt.
Right.
And here, we're sitting here today with 110 on the books, with 30 million on I D A books, talking about another 18 million for a school. At some point in time, we got to get this under control, somehow, some way.
Well, I can tell you, based on my conversation today I had in Richmond, I believe that senators and delegates on the Joint Finance Committee believe that we're going in the right direction. Their comments to me immediately after I spoke, three of them got up and met me as I was leaving, they wanted to talk more to me. I think they have every bit of confidence in you all as council members to do what's right. I think they see that. So.
But that's fine, but that's, the problem with that is it's short-lived.
Well, and that was one of, I was good ready.
They've got to worry about the longevity for 10, 20 years.
I was good ready to go there, because one of the questions the senator asked me in the hearing was, "How can you assure us that if you're no longer city manager or city attorney and your council members are no longer there, how can you assure us that the city would not get back in the shape?" And you all know how I am, I said, "I cannot assure you of that. There's no guarantee as to what would happen if there is a substantial shift."
But if the state passes legislation that says municipalities are not allowed without special state approval to go beyond X, then you'd clamp it down.
Right.
And that's where voter responsibility comes in. We need to know, the people that votes needs to know the person they're voting for, what are they thinking? And, and get to know them a little more.
I mean, if I was a state legislator, you'd say, "You've gotta do that because you're, you've opened your cloak to every municipality in the state, putting your state bond rating and your, um, financial fiduciary standing at jeopardy." If every, imagine if every city pushed it to the limit like Bristol has. What, what condition the state would be, I, I mean, I don't know what they would say. They would, they would be nervous as cats in a ro, room of rocking chairs, I mean, because it would just be crazy. And they've gotta prevent that, so that means they've gotta write something in. Maybe you gotta recommend that this be the language so that it puts, it puts all the cities on the hook for that.
Well, and I think it wasn't during my presentation, it was during the Auditor of Public Accounts presentation, where they were talking about, um, how to start limiting, um, I don't wanna say it that way. The discussion turned on, we're not the only fiscally distressed locality in the Commonwealth. And how they can start changing things in order to put a little more teeth before a locality gets so fiscally distressed that they start to have to step in. So they are looking at things, I'm not exactly sure where that's gonna go, but that was part of the presentation today from the Auditor of Public Accounts.
We need to really talk about this issue right here. And we need to figure out a path to get done what we really need to get done.
I'll work on some language, bring it and, uh, bring it back to you all.
Because five people should never be able to do and put this city in the position it's in today ever again. And we gotta figure out how to fix it to where it can never happen.
So the more, the more language teeth you put in this right here makes it infinitely harder to get out of bounds going forward. That's what we're after.
Okay. I'll work on it. Other changes, um, I directed city staff, all departments, because within our charter, departments are listed. And I asked them to review the language in their charters. One thing that we're probably gonna do is, uh, change things to gender neutral. Uh, that way, it just doesn't have, um, the overtone that it currently has. We're gonna reorganize some of the city departments, we'll get to those in just a second. Um, and changes that are necessary due to state and federal law. And all those changes, I'll be submitting those to you all, uh, shortly, so that you can have time to look at those prior to the November thirteenth meeting. Examples, for example, the removal of the youth service department, it's no longer funded, so it just needs to be repealed and taken from our charter. Uh, and chapter seven, from Planning Department now needs to be changed over to Community Development Department. And then the Transit Department also needs to reflect that we do not provide transit to schools. So those things have never been changed, and it's just simple things like that that need to be changed. There's nothing substantive that, um, I don't think would require a lot of debate. It's just we need to make, make it who we are now, instead of what we were in nineteen ninety when this charter was implemented. So those are the ma, major changes that we have coming, I've already presented. And then the other changes, as I said, are not substantive. Any other changes that y'all would like to discuss?
Uh, yeah, I would like to, uh, set up a work session to where nothing's talked about other than charter changes. Give us time to go through this, read, highlight, and then have a work session and see where everybody's, uh, mind is on everything and, uh,
Here's one thing that I'd probably propose, um, let's wait for that work session until after someone's appointed. We're anticipating appointing someone November sixth, I think, fifth or sixth.
And your deadline's December the eleventh?
Well, that's the last time that we would be able to vote on something. So we would have time to advertise the changes, uh, have the first reading at the November twenty-seventh meeting. So we would need to have the work session after the November thirteenth meeting. I can come back to you all between that time and November twenty-seventh with changes. Um, and then you all can look at them again, we have that work session. And then have the first reading on November twenty-seventh, second reading on December the eleventh.
Okay, with that being said there, the, uh, potential candidates really need to, uh, do some serious reading before we vote on who's gonna be there, because they're gonna be playing catch-up and trying to vote immediately. So they need to get their heads wrapped around this.
If anybody, if anybody has applied or is,
If they're serious about applying, they need to do some homework to be able to be ready to cast a vote.
So we've already talked about a few of these, but there was a couple more I had, just, I do agree we need a work session. I'd like to see us break this up into some logical, you know, let's attack the first four sections on one session or whatever, and then the next session attack the, the next ones unless they inter, interact, you know.
Honestly, I think you'd be able to do it in one, one sitting, I don't think you'll need two, because I've gone through this charter, um, several times. I'm not seeing anything that jumps out at me. Um, the big things that jumped out to me are the things that brought to your attention tonight.
Okay, there, there was just, when I was reading, I think there's, there's some councilman, councilperson, he, she, that kinda stuff needs to be cleaned up.
Right, that's true.
Um, but the removal of a council or officer, you know, we've talked about a couple of things here. We've got some issues with, um, people that have run for election, where they physically are residing as a residence, right? That needs to be clarified and in writing and a time period established of when they have to establish residency and pay taxes before they can allow to be on a ballot. I've got an issue very specifically with one right now. And I think there are more things about, we think about the removal of a councilperson, but are we trying to look at all conclusively that constitutional officers, as well as council members, as well as department heads? No matter who it is, they all get this process laid out of X, Y, and Z for malfeasance or whatever.
Your, your department heads, the only individuals that you all would have any responsibility over would be other council members or me. Any, or anybody that you all appoint to a board. When it comes to department heads, by virtue of being an employee of a locality, there are state laws that, um, would supersede, and they have protections. So if there, if I do have a department head, for instance, at stealing, uh, they would be terminated under my watch. Uh, there would be no question, so that, that's up to me. If I don't do my job, then you all come back to me and the buck stops with me.
What about constitutional officers?
Uh, constitutional officers will be governed by, uh, state statutes. I will do some research if other localities have anything in regards to how they can, uh, deal with constitutional officers. But based on the fact constitutional officers are vested with the power by the Constitution of Virginia, I'd find it very, uh, I don't think General Assembly would basically give a locality more power than what the Constitution, uh, gives the people now.
Well, I just wanna make sure that when we read about the constitutional officers, there needs to be real accountability. Because constitutional officers aren't on the sidelines like other people and they can do things that other people can't. There's gotta be accountability, and I don't think there's enough accountability under certain conditions we've seen.
Well, I'll,
The last one was types of endeavors that a city can get into. I have a real problem with cities being allowed to get into private enterprise. And we don't talk about that anywhere, but when you think about what's got us in trouble, it's every time we try to get into a private enterprise where we're competing in a private market. The federal government doesn't know how to do it, postal service is a good example, and cities don't know how to do it. You need to stay away from private enterprise, period. You're never gonna succeed. So why don't we say that somewhere and why don't the state legislatures write that in law and don't, and prevent municipalities from getting awry from what their intended purpose is, which is public safety, public education, blah, blah. I would like to see that very limited scope on what cities are really there for. So they can't get into all this other business that gets you in trouble. Because you don't know what you're doing when you get out there in the private enterprise, let's try to compete in the open market.
Well, and I think it's clear, um, I can't remember, it seems like I've seen it in our charter that talks about the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And that's what any government is responsible for. And we can definitely clean that up.
There's other language in there like the, or other things that the city, you know, that, so it's kinda, it's kinda an open door.
It's ambiguous, I mean, and if you sit here and say, "We need a landfill to serve our citizens," is that for the health, safety, and welfare of our public? It could be argued yes, because where else are you gonna put your trash? Well, I'll tell you where else you put your trash, you pay someone six hundred thousand dollars a year to pick it up. You don't have a landfill that's costing us half a million dollars a year, plus everything else that's cost us over the past thirty years. So, I'll leave that alone.
Who sets the criteria on, uh, these, uh, constitutional officers? I mean, is a locality at liberty to say, "We can do this in-house," or no, it, the state says it has to be a constitutional officer?
There have been instances of localities bringing certain constitutional offices in-house. And, um, it can be done, it's, um, I wanna say, I, I don't think, what I'm getting ready to say is probably wrong, so I'm not gonna say it. But I do know of one locality that did bring one constitutional office in-house.
If you were to do that, would you still get comp board funding for those positions?
You would not.
So did you have any discussion about, have you ever, with the state legislature, have you ever tried to run a business where you don't really have control over the top-line analysis? And so now you've got a budget for the bottom line and all the costs, but you don't really have your arms around the top line?
We actually touched on that today. Um, I've tried to send you all what I said today, but I couldn't get it to go through for whatever reason. But we touched on that, um, as you all know, I've been working with, uh, getting a local business to stay in the locality. And one of the questions that came up was, how can, well, I proposed a question. I need the state to be able to step in and help in other ways, instead of giving this, through, we'll just take the Tivaka Commission, for example. You run three point two million dollars through a locality to help a local business, but yet you want this locality to sign on that if the business fails, that we're responsible for three point two million dollars. So, and they said, "Why would we do that when we don't have control over the business?" And I said, "Exactly, why would we sign on when we have no more control over the business than you all do?" And I said, "There's gotta be some happy medium." I said, "I don't have an answer, because it's taxpayer money." But when you're asking a locality to put their name on something, it's very hard for a locality to do. And I said, "Bristol could not sign on to three point two million dollars, we can't even sign on to two dollars, much less three point two million." And how can we recruit a business when we can't do that? So I, then I, you know, I went through the process of what we did for American Merchant Performance Bonds, Deeds Trust, and Letters of Credit. I said, "But the problem is, when you have an investor who may not be, he may be a millionaire, but if he goes on the hook for three point two million dollars, that wipes out his savings if it fails." So there's gotta be some happy medium there. And an inv, you know, someone that has some means to do something and the knowledge to fix a business, they don't wanna sign on and lose everything that they've worked for over the last forty years when they need that, when they're thinking about retirement. Because at the age of, in your sixties, you don't have a lot of time to make up anything you lose. So we started that discussion today, I don't know if there'll be an answer, but it's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay, so we're gonna set some work sessions up then?
Yeah, I think probably the best time to do that would probably be maybe November fifteenth, is it Thursday? You don't have a hair blowing?
Because of newspaper deadlines, fourteenth is the last day. Have a work session and get a notice posted.
Okay, so we, so it would have to be to the paper by the fifteenth, right, okay. So, thank goodness for Nicole, she reminded me of newspaper deadlines. So we may need to do a work session prior to a council member being appointed. Let me look at some dates. Because we've got a lot of sessions coming up over the next two weeks as it is, so let me see what I can do.
All right, you done?
I'm done.
I think there was one person signed up for this item, um, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, I appreciate you, uh, letting me speak on thi, this. Um, if you remember, I made a recommendation concerning the debt limits. Um, I believe that those were made in writing. And, uh, in fact, I think they may have been incorporated into one of the versions that never was, uh, wound up being approved because the matter was tabled. But that included such things as wording the, uh, amount per project to be one project or a group of separate projects for the same purpose. Um, and I might add to that, which wasn't in my original proposal, uh, for the same purpose in the same fiscal year. Um, that way, we don't wind up with somebody trying to get around the limits by splitting it up into multiple separate projects that each individually would fall into the cap. But together, well, like say at the Falls, where somebody decides they wanna buy every one of those lots separately, even though they wind up costing fifty million dollars total. And, uh, it's just a matter of careful wording. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, consider closed session, no, no reason for that, I don't think, okay. All right, so we're on the consent agenda, what's the pleasure, counsel? Oh, we need to table it, okay.
Uh, move to table item six.
All right.
Second.
Good motion, Mr. Osborne, saying Mr. Wingard to table number six, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Yes. All right, consent agenda, what's the pleasure, counsel?
I move that we approve all items as presented.
Second.
Take a motion, Mr. Hartley, saying Mr. Osborne to approve all items as listed. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mon Tower?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, right. Hereby adjourned.